Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, August 23, Planning and Zoning Meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizen advisory group to the City Council, charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or matters on plan implementation. All regular meetings of the Planning and Zoning are quasi-judicial in nature and are recorded for record retention and minute transcription. Prior to this meeting, there was an Agenda clarification meeting held at 6:00. Since we have a number of people here, I'm going to go through a few items. First off, discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the Chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the Chair, and a three-minute time limitation is requested for presentations to the commission. Agenda item number one, we have a roll call and report. Aisling, would you please call the roll?
Jack Brennan?
My name is Jack Brennan. I live in the Johnny Creek area. I did make a site visit to Agenda Items 3, 4, and 5. I have nothing else to report.
Bill Hancock?
I'm Bill Hancock. I live in the Lewis and Clark area. I have nothing else to report.
Sean Hargraves?
My name is Sean Hargraves. I live in the University neighborhood. I conducted site visits for Agendas Items 3, 4, and 5, and I have nothing else to report.
Sarah O'Connor?
My name is Sarah O'Connor. I live in the University neighborhood, and I did a site visit to Agenda Item 4 and 5, and I have nothing else to report.
There's complaints they can't hear about here.
We'll try and speak up. If you wanted to come to the front rows, you might be able to hear a little better as well.
Julia Sanders?
My name is Julia Sanders. I live in the South City area. I did site visits to Agenda Items 3, 4, and 5, and have nothing else to report.
Ryan Satterfield?
I'm Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area. I did a site visit for Item Number 3 and Number 5. Nothing else to report.
And we have Jack Horstkes this evening.
All right, thank you. So the audience is aware, these microphones are simply for recording purposes. They don't project anything into the room, and so it's just our voices that... but we will try and speak up so that everybody can hear. Now to Agenda Item Number 2, approval of minutes. Commission, have you had a chance to look over the minutes, and is there any discussion on the minutes?
We looked over the minutes, and they seem accurate to me, so I would go ahead and move that we approve the minutes from our prior meeting.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. Aisling, will you call the roll?
Brennan?
Yes.
Hancock?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Very good. Now Agenda Item Number 3, preliminary plat for the Eagles Landing subdivision. Ruth Decker and Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying have submitted a request to subdivide approximately 11.1 acres into 33 residential lots located on Bertie Thompson and East Terry Street. The land is located within a residential low-density zoning. So if we could hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying, 600 East Oak here in Pocatello, representing the applicants. I was going to prepare a really quick presentation tonight because we've already been through this project a couple of times, but I see there's a few new faces here since last time I was here, so I'll just give a quick rundown. So the project we're talking about is north of Von Semiconductor, south of Bertie Thompson Drive. There's a large vacant property located there. Some months ago, we came in and requested a zone change for a portion of the property because there was a dividing line that kind of went through the middle of the property, and that's kind of a little unusual to have a property with multiple zoning designations on it. I believe it was unanimously recommended and unanimously approved at the council level to do that project, or to do the zone change, which was to support this project that we're presenting today. That project is essentially 16 twin homes. You can see, kind of in blue in the background, it kind of... just the twin home unit would kind of circle around the proposed road that we're doing. We would like to do an initial phase that would serve these first two units just off of Bertie Thompson Drive. That would be kind of our first division or division one, and then the remainder of the project would be developed into this road as the future, you know, probably next... more like next summer. So we'd like to get started on these first two as quick as possible. We've been through a number of iterations on layouts, just really fine-tuning the layout as far as doing some grading analysis. We've done some geotechnical work. We've already done an extensive amount of that, and I believe that was submitted as part of the preliminary plat application. I didn't see it necessarily noted in there. It's just kind of the standard condition, or condition, but we have done all that work. We've done the stormwater analysis, and there were some comments in the staff report relative to the stormwater and kind of adjusting where we have some of the structures and different things in that, in the pond, so we're, I think, on board with most of the conditions. One of the things I think that got misinterpreted as part of our plat, we're not intending to dedicate or do anything to the city. It's all going to be... it'll all be encompassed as part of this project. We will have an association that will maintain the exterior parts of this project, and so, you know, the maintenance of the stormwater and the hillier areas would just fall under that and to be to keep track of that. So I think it's fairly straightforward. We meet the minimum lot sizes. I just ask that you review and approve the project as presented. If you have questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for Mitch?
So, did you say you weren't going to... you're going to dedicate the streets, just not the...
Yeah, the streets, yes.
Okay, the drainage.
You know, the way it's written, this, you know, this steeper area here, we were... somehow got conveyed that it was going to be dedicated. We're not going to dedicate any property other than the streets to the city.
And so you're comfortable with all of the other conditions then in the staff report?
Yeah.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Mitch. If we could hear from Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Matthew Lewis, Planning Division Manager with the city. I think Mitch gave a good detailed presentation as far as what's before you. Staff really doesn't have a whole lot to add, other than they do meet the minimum lot sizes. It was noted that... you may recall that there was a rezoning request for about a little over six acres of land that was closer to Terry Street, and that was approved by the City Council. So the entire property is zoned residential low-density, which allows the use outright. And the reason, I think in the staff report, there was a... we did have under the stormwater that the stormwater was going to be dedicated to the city, and that was from a note that was actually on the plat, so if that's different, it should probably... I guess it should probably be clarified. Other than that, staff would recommend approval with the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. Most of those are found under Exhibit 1, which is with Engineering Department. Other than that, I have no other... nothing else. Matt, do you have any questions on behalf of the...
Very good. Thanks, Matt. Any questions for Matt?
Matt, so I was looking at the conditions that were set by the city. Is it only Condition Number 12 that talks about a review by qualified engineer and written analysis of the stormwater plan? Is that the only condition that's affected by the fact that the stormwater is not being dedicated to the city, or...
That shouldn't affect it.
Yeah, we'll just have to work with that. Again, that was something that was on the plat, and it seemed that it was going to be dedicated. So if that's going to be otherwise, we can work through that within the final plat.
And I guess what I... and I'm not trying to be contrary here, I'm just really trying to understand is, any conditions that have been currently recommended by the staff that would not be recommended in light of this new knowledge? Does that make sense?
I don't think that changes anything.
Doesn't change any of the current recommendations?
No.
Okay.
You want to add? You have any questions? I answered the question.
Okay. And maybe I could ask to clarify a little bit. And so the 2.5 to 1 grading would still hold?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. All right, with that, open to discussion.
Can we discuss that?
No, there's no... no argument there. Any discussion with the commission? Thoughts on the project?
It just seems like it's been moving wrong in a very organized way to get to this point.
So I'd say if there is a motion, and that we probably in any motion...
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Mitchell Greer, one more thing. So the 2.5 to 1 slopes, I think we do have that designated in our plan, but what I would say is, I hate to see that be a condition, and I'll say why. It should be determined from an engineering study. So we've done that, and we are doing 2 to 1 slopes, but let's say, for instance, we get a, you know, something... somebody wants to put a different size home or do something different than what they're planning, you know, I would like that to be based on the engineering study rather than a condition that you guys have placed an arbitrary amount, okay? So that's one thing. I apologize, and I kind of brought... I missed that a little bit, that that was a condition. I meant that by my geotechnical report response. The second thing is, we do want a planter strip within the project, and I think we're talking about a seven-foot wide planter, but we may ask for, you know, some variances on that planter strip. We'll do... we'll request that at council level, but just so you guys are aware that that may be coming, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mitch. Yeah, Merrill, could we ask a question of you?
Merrill Quell, the Public Work Development Engineer for the City of Pocatello.
So what are your thoughts, Merrill, as far as the 2.5 to 1 condition being a part of this, or would you be comfortable with it being worked through in the design phase?
I would like it to remain. If it is shown in the geotechnical analysis and evaluation that a 2.5 to 1 will work, then we will accept that. If not, then it needs to follow that geotechnical analysis. But at a minimum, if the geotechnical analysis comes in at a 2 to 1, we still want to see it at a minimum of a 2.5 to 1, where it is that close to Buckskin and Terry, and it affects the roadway and the right-of-way down-low.
Okay. Any other questions for Merrill? All right, thank you, Merrill. Okay, so back to discussion, Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Agenda Item Number 3, the preliminary plat for Eagles Landing subdivision, subject to the recommendations that the staff has imposed.
Good.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Aisling, will you call the vote?
Hancock?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Hargraves?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Very good. Now we are moving on to Agenda Item Number 4. This is a public hearing, a conditional use permit. Jim Neal of Flamingo Manufactured Home Community, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, requests a conditional use permit to expand the existing manufactured home park at 1002 Samuel Street. The property is located within a residential medium-density single-family density zoning district. Municipal Code 17.03.230 allows manufactured home parks and expansions in all zoning districts through the conditional use permit process. So if we could start with the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. My name is Brady Smith, Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho, A3201. I kind of want to give you a little bird's-eye view of where we're kind of located. If you're familiar with the Stockman Road area here, just off of South Fifth, it comes in on Broadway, you can get there, but we're actually at the corner of Belmont Street and Stockman Road here. Much of this to the northwest that you see is the existing community park that this is associated with. Currently, it's kind of hard to see, and I think I can actually freeze my base so you can kind of see the existing conditions. You can kind of... there's a lot of trees, but you can kind of see some outside storage area here between the trees with some trailers and some different things that are currently stored there presently. They have since acquired this piece on the corner that was... that had a trailer and some trees and a few miscellaneous items to go with this. So what that has done is it has increased kind of the potential that can go with this property. And having said that, I'll kind of flip this back on. We have kind of obviously used that extra room, although it is a little bit steeper on this, you know, southeast end, to kind of incorporate our layout. So in kind of a nutshell, we're taking an existing property that's currently being used as open storage, and after some discussions with the ownership group and kind of the feeling of the community there, there has been a need for some private storage space. And so in addition to the private storage space that we're requesting, which currently as shown is 65 units, ranging in sizes, you know, from 10 by 10 to 10 by 12, I think are the two sizes as shown, we've also tried to accommodate the open area to match the square footage that they have currently, to try to address that. So we're trying to match that in kind and then add to that with some, you know, enclosed storage. One thing I would like to mention, however, is since this application was originally, you know, submitted, there has been some discussion of potentially taking out some of these walls in the middle and making a larger, an even larger unit, which square footage-wise probably wouldn't make much difference, but unit-wise, that would drop. So I just want to clarify that so that you're aware that we wouldn't have anything over the 65 what they were asking for, but in a future build-out scenario, we could see less. And if that were to happen, you know, that would then be replaced with more open storage. So it's kind of one or the other. Those are the two uses that we would be seeking in any combination therein below the 65. So hopefully that makes sense. It will kind of be driven a little bit by the market within the community itself, what the demands are, it will kind of help them understand how fast this thing phases out and how it's built out. So we are just asking that because it is, you know, a part of this community and we're able to apply for this conditionally permitted use, that you kind of have all the information that you need. So with that, I'd kind of be happy answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brady. Any questions for Brady?
How many lots are there in the community?
136. 168.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
This is going to be just used by residents, and how are you going to make sure residents aren't, you know, renting them out to other people?
We'll sign up regarding the contract.
We'd probably need to have you come here...
I'm sorry.
And then if you'll state your name and address.
Thank you. Jim Neal, General Manager for the Flamingo Manufactured Housing Community here in Pocatello. Good evening, folks. Yeah, it's a... we have 168 spaces there. We have almost 500 people that live there. The necessity has been growing over the years. We did build another complex out on South Fifth. That's open to the public, so I don't need that. What we need is storage areas for the indoor and outdoor for our community, residents themselves. The area has been depressed for a while. My part of the park has been depressed. I'm looking forward... hopefully I get this through. I'm looking forward to make it look nice, look rich, look appropriate, and help everyone in that particular part of the area, including my residents there. They've been asking... I don't have the 12 by 12 or 12 by 20s or any of those over at the other facility, just 10 by 10s and 5 by 10s. And since I opened that a couple of years ago, it's been full constantly, and we have a waiting list for outside to the public. But I also have a waiting list now with the folks in the park that's looking for this to be put together, strictly for the residents there. No one's on the outside is going to come in. It's just like our program there for like housing. You have to own your own home to live in my park. There's no rental, rent-to-own, leases, lease-to-own. You own your own home, so you're responsible for it. If you want to sell it, you can sell it, but the new owner has to be approved by me if it's going to be left in the park. Same with these storage units. They're going to be the same. They can't rent them out to anybody. If they do, they'll be shut down, obviously, and we'll move on. But just to make sure that one understands, it's not going to be open to the public.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would like to add is we have seen the staff recommendations, and we are in agreement with those.
Excellent. Very good. Any more questions from the commission? Okay, thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
Matt, if we could hear from you?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission members, Matthew Lewis, Planning Manager. As noted in the reading of the agenda, an application is submitted by Jim Neal, representing Flamingo Mobile Home Park and Brady Smith of RMS for an additional use permit to allow expansion of the existing manufactured home park. Subject property is located within a residential medium-density single-family zoning district. Municipal Code Section 17.03.30 allows manufactured home parks and expansion there too in the RMS zoning district through the conditional use permit application process. As noted, this past April 2017, the property owner Steel Kurlander Investments LLC purchased property addressed at 1026 Belmont Street in order to consolidate the property into Flamingo Mobile Home Park and construct storage units for residents of the park. Property measures 15,835 square feet, and is adjacent to existing outdoor storage area associated with the Mobile Home Park. APK proposes to rearrange its outdoor storage and add 43 10 by 12 and 22 10 by 10 closed storage units. Said units are to be used by residents of the Mobile Home Park. Municipal Code Section, excuse me, 17.02.130D, criteria for review. The hearing body shall review the facts and circumstances of each proposal in terms of following of the following standards and determine whether there is adequate evidence showing that the requested use at a proposed location meets the stated criteria. First one is the requested use is conditionally permitted within the subject land use district and complies with all the applicable provisions of this code unless modified through the CUP process. As previously mentioned, the subject property is located within RMS zoning district. Municipal Code Section 17.03.230 allows manufacturing home expansion through that... through the CUP process. Municipal Code standards that apply include the following. Code Section 17.06.300, Number 11, requires that an area to provide for storage of boats, campers, trucks, or any equipment that would tend to crowd or detract from any trailer park shall be provided. This area shall be gravelled or paved, fenced, isolated, and screened from trailer spaces. Minimum size of the area shall not be less than 100 square feet for each trailer space. An outdoors storage area is currently provided for about 15 spaces. Therefore, the APK is required to provide an equal amount of outdoor storage as part of the proposed changes, specifically a total of 1,500 square feet. The APK notes in the written analysis Number 6 that 1,650 square feet of outdoor storage will be provided. Code Section 17.06.312 states that manufactured home parks shall have a 15-foot-wide landscape buffer around boundaries of the park. The only area subject to this requirement is proposed... is the proposed change in expansion of the storage area. Site plan depicts landscape setbacks of 15 feet along the street frontages. The APK would like to maintain the existing mature trees, however, because all are Siberian elm, so staff is recommending that these be removed and new trees planted from the city's master list of acceptable trees, and this is found as Condition Number 3 in the staff report. Curved-gunned sidewalk will be installed per city engineering department requirements. Use is consistent with the goals and policies of the Conferencing Plan and is currently zoned residential. Number 3, the requested use is compatible with existing and permitted land uses within the general area. As noted, an outdoor storage is measuring approximately 1,500 square feet is currently provided as part of the park. Storage area will remain at the same location without outdoor storage areas being provided as well as enclosed storage. Municipal Code Section again requires that, and they will meet the requirements of the code with regards to setbacks and so forth. The Mobile Home Park and proposed storage area is adequately served by existing public facilities and services. The addition of the storage will not have a significant effect on the delivery of existing public facilities or services. Number 5, criteria. The requested use would be harmonious in scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with all adjacent permitted land uses. The proposed storage units are similar in height as a mobile home. Intensity of the use and impact to the surrounding neighborhood is significantly reduced by the fact that the units will only be available to residents of the Mobile Home Park and not the general public. The requested use criteria 6, the requested use would not adversely affect the environment to a greater degree than had a use permitted outright by the ordinance been established. Other uses permitted outright by the zoning ordinance in RMS zone, including residence and accessories structures, could potentially have as great, if not greater, impact than the use that is being provided, proposed. Lastly, the request would be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, or welfare of the city and its proposed location, size, design, and operating characteristics. The project as proposed will not be detrimental to the public interest as there will not be any... the project is already within a private residential complex and is intended to be in addition to that private complex. The storage sheds, again, will not be available to the public. In conclusion, the proposed enclosed storage areas will be required to comply with all applicable building code regulations. Additionally, all standards and regulations applicable to this development, including and regulations applicable to this development, including but not limited to meeting minimum setbacks, screening, and outdoor lighting, will be required. The structure, the structures are low profile, similar to the height of a mobile home park, meaning setback requirements. And finally, the fact that the outdoor storage and enclosed storage will only be used by residents of the mobile home significantly reduces the potential detrimental impacts to the health, safety, and general welfare of, of the public. Notice was published in the Idaho State Journal. Malleys were done to all property owners within the 300-foot radius of the park, not just that, that small area that we're talking about, but the entire park. Two signs were posted on the subject property, one on Belmont, another on Stockman. Staff has not received any written correspondence or inquiries from the public as of 5:00 PM before this meeting. That being the case, based on information submitted by the Appcan in review of the applicable municipal code provisions, staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. As far as the Planning and Zoning Commission action, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall conduct a public hearing, which you're currently doing, and render a decision based on applicable municipal codes and evidence provided at the public hearing. And also, the commission would need to make a motion that the chair sign the findings of fact, and this would be a decision at the council or at the commission level. So with that, lots of talking on my part. I usually don't do that, but I wanted to give all the details and reasoning for staff's recommendation. So, any, any questions with staff?
Any questions for Matt?
I have a question. Can you explain to us a little bit why the staff is recommending the removal of the existing Siberian elms and instead planting trees from the city's master list of acceptable trees?
Because Siberian elms are not from that master list of, of trees. They're basically an invasive species, if you will. And so, that was the reason for that. And that's...
Any other questions for Matt?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, with that, we will move to the public hearing. To explain a little bit about how the public hearing will work, we'll first open it up to those who are in favor of the application. We will then open it up to those who are neutral to the application, and then lastly, those who are opposed to the application. If you would please keep your comments to three minutes. Timer will be over here on the side for your reference. So, the public hearing is now open, and so, those in favor, if we could hear from you first. Saying none, those who are neutral to the application. Saying none, those who are opposed to the application. Please step forward and give your name and address.
My name is Norma Turnbow, and I live at 4340 Stockman Road. I also own the property at 4342 Stockman Road, which is a home. I'm adamantly opposed to this proposal because, first of all, I think that we're putting a commercial building in the middle of a family-owned and occupied residential area. Whether they intend to rent only to Flamingo Trailer Court occupants or not, it is still a commercial building because they're still renting it out. My big concern with this also is the necessity for this project. They're, they're proposing over 65 enclosed spots along with, I believe, 15 open area spots. If there's 168 trailers in the court currently, that means they're estimating that one out of every three occupants is going to rent a storage unit. I find this really difficult to believe in this area. I counted the number of outside vehicles, et cetera, that they have parked in their current storage, outdoor storage area, and right now, I counted it to be 19 or 20. If they put 15 of those on the outside lots, that leaves four only that are actually necessary at this time to cover the rest of those vehicles that are parked there. Where are the other 60-some-odd people going to be to rent these units? Another concern I have is that there is significant runoff, stormwater runoff, from the hills on the opposite side of Stockman. When it comes out of those back hills and flows down Stockman, it goes directly across Stockman into that area. With the proposal, they're putting a huge amount of pavement in there that I believe is going to cause problems with that water. They're also putting an entrance into that storage area right where that water comes down. Now, when that water comes down from those hills, where is it going to go? They've indicated in here that they're putting in a storage, water storage unit, but if that fills up with water every spring, are the residents of that area going to have to live with a swampy area the size of whatever it is for months to come? Well, that actually drains and goes away. Without that natural environment there, that water that comes down from those hills has absolutely nowhere to go. And I can tell you from experience, it comes down faster and harder than what a normal curb is going to, to handle. So, it's either going to flow over the curb and go into their pavement, which could possibly, because there's nothing to absorb the water there, go into the homes on the other side, or if they direct it into that storage area, we're going to be sat, we're going to be stuck with a very large pond of water for an extremely long time in the spring and early summer. My other big concern is how are we going to police that this is only rented to occupants of Flamingo Mobile Home Court? The proposal indicates that it will. Now, we need to keep in mind that this proposal is coming from an out-of-state company. It's not owned by anyone within the Pocatello area. They're in this for the revenue only. They do not own any residences in the area. So, how can we guarantee that they're not going to start renting these out to the general public once they realize that they're not going to be able to get them full with the people that are, they're in Mobile Home Court? This is a really big concern of mine because I think we all know, storage units do not belong in residential areas when they're, they're built to be rented out to the public. Is there going to be a mechanism to police this so that there's a way to know whether or not they're renting only to occupants of the mobile home? If they don't do this and they start renting generally, what's the ramification to the company? Again, this is not a Pocatello-owned company. Mr. Neal represents the company as the general manager of the program of the proposal, but he does not own that property. So, I guess my big concerns is, what kind of mechanism is there for the future so that we know that this doesn't become general rental property? We know what happens. They have current property down on Fifth and Broadway. That's a good location for it. I have no objection to them developing this location with more mobile homes. I think that would be a much more appropriate use for the location for the, the residential area that's there than to put in a large commercial building that who knows what's going to happen to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others that would like to speak?
Yeah.
Very good. With that, we will close the public hearing. We would like to give some time to the applicant for a rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Brady Smith, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, I vote for Rock Mountain Engineering and Serving. So, I might default to Jim on some of the operations portion, if that's all right, if you have additional questions. But I can speak to a couple of the concerns that the lady before me just mentioned about, you know, I think stormwater was a big concern she had. I will say that this is a, and let me actually bring up my plat so you can see it maybe just a little bit more clear without all the, you know, background noise of the image. But we actually have taken into consideration a few things that will, I think, help with some of the stormwater concerns. Number one, we are going to put a street curb and gutter along all the roads that front our property. Within that, if there were a major event and we, you know, I, I do agree that we just, you never know what Mother Nature can throw at us. But if this were to overtop and come in, as well as the drainage that we anticipate being generated within our own development area, we have kind of allowed for that. What you can see here is kind of a valley gutter system. Again, this is preliminary in nature, but it is giving you a pretty good idea of our plan on it. So, we have thought this through. We have taken it a little extra step beyond just preliminary. And I've actually even looked at the grading in real terms with the topography of the land. And everything does fall from basically east to west. So, the natural grading is actually coming down to this fence border. Within that, we, again, have created these channelized paths for water that will come through here. And at their endpoint, we've planned to do a gathering ditch on this whole back of the property and then collect it in a natural low area that exists today. So, it really does actually, by the grades, in fact, support that drainage. And we actually are going to create a buffer, if you will, to the park to the west. So, we have thought that through. We do recognize that there are going to be some engineering, you know, potentials that we have to prove to the staff, and we're familiar with that, and we do that a lot. So, we have thought it through. We feel like the combination of the city infrastructure that's there to account for what's going to be in the roads in events will take care of some, and then we'll try to manage what we can within the development. As far as the size and scale, I think you might have heard me mention earlier that this will be kind of a market-driven idea. And I mean that within the market of the community. If it is only looking like maybe 20 are going to really go, the benefit of having these storage units small and easy to maintain is he could put up 10. He could put up 10 right now, and maybe that's all he ever needs. But if he's got a waiting list of many other people, I think it's safe to say that he could maybe pull the trigger on another one. So, like I said, I mentioned, I think it's always more appropriate to come in and tell you what we could have, but there is a likelihood that it could be less, and we recognize that. And I think the ownership recognizes that. As far as policing it and monitoring it, I might have Jim come up and speak to that more if you'd like. But as far as the comment about out-of-state, that is true. The owners are out-of-state, but Jim has been here for years. He's, he's ran a successful complex here for years. He's very on top of things, and he has managed 165 units. I think that, you know, 60 more is not really going to be something he can't handle, but I'll let him speak to that. If there's any questions for me, I can answer those.
Can I ask with regard to, you talked about fencing around this. Can you speak to that a little bit to, given the, the fact and the concern that this is a residential neighborhood and it's not typically what you would want to look at on a storage unit from a residential house? What kind of fencing has been considered or is, is intended to be put there?
So, what we would be looking at is a six-foot-high chain link, security-type fence. I think that you kind of can recognize that. I, I don't know if you've seen the Broadway location, but it'll be, it'll be just like the Broadway location. I think it's six-foot high. It has a, like a two-foot wing out on the tops to kind of keep the, the people from coming in. There would be gates at the openings, which I will mention, there is an access on, on Broadway and on, or on Stockman and on Belmont. But if you have been out to the side, I know some of you have, there are gated entrances already. I mean, we are basically just improving those. That's how the access is currently configured. They can get in on Stockman with a double gate, and they can also exit on Belmont through a double gate. So, we're trying to make that a little bit nicer and cleaner, but the accesses exist today.
Can you explain the, what it is, what is it? The valley gutter, is that more like a concrete ditch?
Yes.
Or is it a metal grading system where water would actually flow down and out?
Currently, it'd all be on the surface. So, it would all be in that concrete channel, if you will. Those are generally about four feet wide, about two inches deep, and they have slope to them, not only in the gutter itself with the depth, but also are usually designed to take flow to certain directional areas. So, yes, it's a concrete channel.
Okay.
Any more questions for Brady?
So, there's a 15-foot landscape area on Stockman Road. So, you could actually drain water from, from the curves into that landscape area, right, to take some additional water?
You could, although it will be a little challenging just because the grade does, it, it doesn't appear like it, but from that top, which would be the actual southeast corner, which in this orientation, north is to the, the left of the page. But there is a substantial drop across this property. So, there could be some means to where that could happen. But in all likelihood, just the natural grading is probably going to make it come on to us and through our property and then down to the ditch below. But, you know, we, we haven't looked at the ditch side on the, on the, on the side you're referring to just because of the grade is much higher there.
So, there is a possibility that once you collect the water in that gutter, it flows past that entrance, continues down, and comes out where there is no gutter, and then goes into the Mobile Home Park.
Are you talking about the street side curb?
Yeah.
But, but as with any development, we're, we're required to put that curb and gutter in. If that was a developed piece or a street in, anywhere in town, I mean, we, we're certainly willing to do our portion for our property, but that is kind of, you know, the nature of, of what happens there. It's going to gather water, yes, and it may channel it down further. Now, we haven't, again, been to a staff-level review of a construction design, but we have, you know, felt that what we've looked at, at least preliminarily, will work for this project. If there are other things that come up with staff, certainly we have to address those in the design.
Thank you, Brady. Jim, can we ask you a question?
Thank you once again, Jim Neal, manager of the park. Let's see, the, one of the questions was policing.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Well, not everybody in the park is going to rent one. What I have, probably about 10% right now that are, 5% that's written over at our other facility. The other folks inside the park, not all of them are going, going to rent. Not all of them have RVs and vehicles and utility trailers and that sort of thing. Now, if they rent, and we will, there is revenue going to be requested to rent these, which is going to be attached to their monthly rent. So, all I can say to the commissioners is my books are always open to you. Anytime you want to come in and check to see if we're selling on the outside, be my guest. I am dead set against that. I've got enough to say grace over with the 70 units I have on the outside as it is. And this is going to be a little easier for me to control because I have them right there in the park. I do want to leave enough space for those who have RVs, for boats, that, et cetera. So, we're going to leave a lot of room for that. We're talking about stormwater, and, and I don't know whether the young lady thinks that we're going to cement that whole thing and make it all solid cement. That's not the case. Far as I understand, what I want to do is have the storage units sitting on cement slabs. The rest of it to be nice grated, nice gravel, and what have you. Which will also soak up the water at the same time. So, that's asphalt that we had to use on the other program, and glad we did. It, it looks very, very nice out there. It's been easy to take care of. This will be a little more challenging for us, but I think it's going to be just perfect for everyone. And yes, not everybody's going to rent one of those. So, but they'll always be available. Thus, I don't know whether we have up to 65 units we proposed. Again, I'm not sure that I'm going to start out putting in all 65 at the same time. So, we'll, we'll be looking at that. But I, I just want to develop the, the area. It's been something, I've been there 15 years running that park, and it's been something that's been on my mind for a long time to try to get that taken care of. The holdback was the property at 1026 Belmont. We had to purchase that. We had to wait for them to want to sell it. And I've had a letter in their possession for nine years that we were wanting to have first right of refusal, and it came about. So, we'd like to develop this. The other large parks, my size, in, in town, they all have existing units there that they do the same thing. But we're going to do the same thing here that we did on Fifth Street and Belmont, with the nice buildings, lighting, surveillance, security, fences, electronic gates. We're going to do it right, bottom line.
Jim, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
You've talked about other large units of your type have this. What do they have for fencing and other?
They don't. They're within the complex. They don't. They're within the complex themselves. Like Highland Meadows, for instance, has a large park area, and right off of the park area, they have a strip of buildings there, and they're made out of wood. That they're just locked up with personal locks. There's, High Country Estates just has a few here and there. And Golden Hills, they don't have any at this time. And then there's another one over in Chubuk. I can't remember the name of that park, but they have a few, but they're, been there for a long time and run down. Smaller park there on Alameda, Diamond Trailer Park there, they have several in there, and they're all wood. Some of them are metal. But, yeah, they run them out to their residents, and none of them are rented to the outside public.
Any more questions for Jim?
Sir, you mentioned that you felt there would be plenty of room for additional RVs or boats or larger vehicles, we'll call them. But as I look at this drawing, it seems like there's only three spaces for larger. Is that right, on the north side?
There's also on the south side.
Okay.
The plans are, kind of my plans are to hopefully that I can at least give enough room for those who don't want to rent a unit, but they just want to put their RV in there. 33-foot, the 34-foot is about the length of a fifth wheel. And there's no tip-outs because they're just parking it on the property. Most of the vehicles are utility trailers with jet skis on them or snowmobiles, things of that nature. And some of them are just stored vehicles. And the problem is that, another thing I want to get away from with the residents, and they're all aware of it, I do a newsletter, and that is that I don't want junk up there. And it's a gathering place for junk. To me, it's eyesore. And I make my feelings known to the people in my park, period, that it doesn't look good. I know that if I was sitting across the street from there, I'd be concerned about what it looked like, and I'd be concerned about what my house's value is due to that. I want to rectify that for the folks, but I want to rectify that for the park and the people in my park at the same time. So we want to do it right. And again, when they come, if they live in the park already and they want to rent one of our units, they're going to come in, they're going to fill out another separate contract. It's going to be attached to their file, and the amount of the storage cost will be attached to the monthly rent, and they'll pay it out at the same time. All due on the first. There's going to be a chart, there's a chart in my office already on what we have over on the Fifth Street side and of what we have up there right now. So that's the plans. That's what we want to do.
All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, Commission, if there's discussion that we'd like to have?
I thought Mr. Neal's park was actually very well-maintained. And I feel that, I think having a storage unit could only benefit the residents who live there, having a safe, secure place to put their vehicles and things like that. I feel it would be a benefit to that community.
Is it possible, Mr. Chairman, to hear from Merrill Quell with regard to the water? Just to speak, we've heard from the engineer for the development, the city engineer. If he could address that to the concerns of water?
I'm Merrill Quell, the Public Works Development Engineer for the City of Pocatello. I have not seen any of the calculations or anything to this development. However, Rocky Mountain Engineering does several developments through town. They're very familiar with the Port and Valley Stormwater Manual and the requirements set in there. So by the time I get to look at it, or when it is submitted for the construction, I would assume that it is meeting those requirements. Basically, looking at it, and my experience would say that it looks like it is meeting those requirements at first glance. I don't know if you had any further questions past that.
No, I guess, you know, there was concerns that were mentioned, and I recognize that that's probably for later decision, later application. Just preliminary, preliminarily, since there's neighbors who have legitimate concerns about the water and the runoff as to...
And there is legitimate concerns over the past few years in running property from BLM across from Vannick County into the city of Pocatello limits through this area. There are some flooding. This establishment, if it does overflow, will go down through the trailer court. And I'm sure that the owner and manager is fully aware of that and going to put in any precautions they can to make sure those standards are met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would like to say to Mr. Neal, if the Commission does vote in approval of this, maybe just consider a recycling bin along with the trash receptacle that you have discussed. I assume there might be a lot of recyclable material boxes and stuff.
Absolutely.
And also consider what the aesthetics might be for those living in the neighborhood. Maybe chain-link will be okay with the addition of the new trees. Maybe something else needs to be done as well, just something to consider.
There's no more discussion. That entertains a motion.
I move that we approve the conditional use permit, including the staff recommendations, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact. End of session.
I'll second that.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded. Island, would you call the vote?
Brendan?
Yes.
Santa?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Very good. Motion passes. All right, Agenda Item Number Five, Contract Rezone. Dave Packer, represented by RMES, requests to rezone property on the east side of Hawthorne Road, approximately 430, 430 feet south of Quinn Road. The property is located in a residential medium-density, single-family zoning district with a comprehensive plan map designation of residential. The request is to rezone by contract from RMS to residential high-density to allow construction of 10 fourplex apartment buildings. If we could hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Commission members. This is Mitchell Greer with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to present this project for Mr. Packer. He's been a longtime resident of Pocatello. Is in the business of providing affordable housing for our community and does a great job at it. I don't know if any of you know him, but he does, has done, and has a proven track record of providing that product in our community. So when I read the staff report, and we've read a lot of opposition from the neighbors, there's several letters that I'm sure you guys have had an opportunity to review. I want you guys to maybe, let's look at this a little differently than we might look at a normal project. Normally, when I'm standing before you, and we've kind of presented some of this information, I go through the, I go through the criteria for which you might approve a zone change, and I say, you know, it meets it because of this, and it meets it because of that. And I'll probably do that here at the end of my presentation. But I want to step back and say that we have a current zone of RMS, right? What does that allow us to do? We can build twin homes, which Mr. Lewis mentioned in his staff report. So we can put twin homes on this project, on this property. And I spent a little bit of time configuring kind of what a twin home project might look like. So this project, one of the main issues was access off of Hawthorne Road. I think that creates some heartburn with everyone. Well, Mr. Packer owns this home on Quinn Road, and so we could create an access off of Quinn Road if that was a concern or if that was a reason to deny. We certainly could do that. We could still maintain this as an access for emergencies or utility cord or whatever we need to do. But this configuration is twin homes. And if you've had a chance to review your packet, in that packet, it shows his unit that he proposes to build. And he's built those units in a number of locations in this community. And so he's familiar with that fourplex concept. He has, you know, that's how his operation operates. They're set up to maintain and operate and do these things. But if we are forced to, we can create a twin home project. So this is, this project, it's fairly dark on the screen, but this project is permissible within the current zoning, within the current regulations of the city. I don't have to come to you guys and ask for anything. I can just submit my plans to the city and start building. I don't have to talk to the residents. We don't have to do any of it. So what is the difference? What is the difference? Okay? That's what I want you guys to focus on. It's eight units, eight residential units, between what I'm asking for in the rezone and what is allowed currently under the zone. It's eight units. What is that? It's 40 trips a day in cars. It's, I don't know, three people per unit. It's 24 more people in this project than what would be allowed under the current zone. So what that means to Mr. Packer is whether or not his project's going to be successful or not, probably. It's eight units. That's what we're asking for. And I realize everybody's upset about it, and we hear their concerns, and I want to hear their concerns, and we want to tailor the project to meet their needs as much as possible. But we also want to make our project as successful as possible as well. So what does the eight units mean? It doesn't really change anything. We've still, we've still put the units within this area, and we leave a vacant spot in our project. What's that vacant spot going to be? I don't know. I don't know. Maybe what it is now, pasture, field, could be whatever. So I just ask that you think about those eight units. That's what we're really asking for. We're not asking for a crazy number of units. The question isn't whether or not we can put a project there. It's whether or not we can put eight more units in the project than what we currently are allowed to under the zone. So with that, I ask certainly that we hear the residents, but I want you to just consider those eight units as you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Staff, if we could hear from you?
Can't forget my eyes. So the request before you is for contract rezoning from residential medium-density, single-family, which does allow duplexes and townhomes with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, if that were the case. I'm not sure of how Mitch has gone on the calculation. My estimated calculation is under the RMS and under 8,000 square feet with 2.5 acres, thereabouts, you can get about 12 units on there, meaning 12 duplex units or 12 townhome units. It's kind of a significant difference with what is being proposed. Staff's review of this based on the criteria for the contract rezoning, first thing you look at is, you know, what's in the area? In their written analysis, you may have noted that a lot, there was some argument with regards to the fact that Quell Meadows was in, kind of in the neighborhood, Cottonwood Cove, and Willow Apartments. Those are all on Quinn. They really don't have too much of an impact on the neighbors that this is in the middle of. The lot sizes that are adjacent to the use are fairly large, anywhere from a small of 11,000 to as much as almost 30,000 square feet, with the exception of what is in the North Gate Development, which is just kind of to the east, southeast. It's pretty dense in there. Just looking at the closest lot sizes to this development, they're anywhere from about 7,200 square feet to a large of around 11,000. Also, the other consideration that staff reviewed based on the criteria was just the access, the existing infrastructure with regards to roads. There's an issue with the water and sewer. All of those type of infrastructures are available. But when you look at Hawthorne Road, there's a significant difference between Hawthorne when you get on the east side, or actually it'd be kind of on the north side of Hawthorne from the intersection of Quinn Road, where you have basically two lanes on one side and a lane on another, turn lane. Compared to, between Quinn and Alameda, it's a very narrow corridor, anywhere from 23 to about 25 feet in terms of just the width of the road. There's not, pretty much of it is void of curb, gutter, sidewalk. So there needed to be some, at least, discussion and with regards to the staff report to that regard. Because of that, when they came to the Site Plan Review Committee, Engineering Department had some concerns with whether a decelerate lane might need to be required. And so they did ask a traffic analysis be conducted to analyze that. There still needs to be a little bit of work on that, but it is a requirement, and that's part of the outline they have there. Another thing that staff looked at was just, and again, this is based on the criteria that's set forth in the code, is it compatible in terms of scale, density, coverage, intensity? Some of that I've already mentioned, but when you look at the scale and the mass of a two-story kind of structure in comparison to what is around it, it's significant. It's a difference. So those are really the main things that staff looked at in the criteria. That is all outlined in the staff report. And basically, with that, in summary, staff concluded that the development is not compatible in terms of scale, mass, coverage, density, and intensity with adjacent land uses. Under the current zoning, as I noted, you could construct townhomes. You could construct two-family dwelling units, but anything beyond that is not permitted either conditionally or outright. So what we found is that that would be a significant difference in terms of the units that are being proposed compared to what could be outright permitted. Even with the proposed improvements to Hawthorne and Quinn intersection, it should be noted that regardless of the width of Hawthorne and so forth, that if the development were to be approved, that Hawthorne, as it currently is, at least from Quinn to Alameda, is still capable of handling any type of impact that would, or traffic generated from this particular use. And the staff report... In the staff report, I do outline the trip generation on that and so forth. And so, with, with that, staff's recommendation would be to deny the request. And in the event that the recommendation to approve the request is rendered by the commission, I just remind you that this is a recommendation to the council. So, you need to have the chair sign the findings of fact and whatever the recommendation would be. And there's five conditions that, actually seven conditions, that staff, or that staff's recommending that if the commission does recommend to the council approval of the request, I would suggest that you might want to consider those. Just briefly, notice was sent to all property owners within 300 foot radius. Notice was placed in a newspaper, sign placed on the property. As you noted, there was public comments that were received, written comments, and the commission has those in hand. With that, we happen to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Matt.
My understanding is there's going to be a traffic light installed at the intersection of Hawthorne and Quinn.
Yes.
Are they going to widen Hawthorne Road at that intersection to three lanes or a turning lane?
I think they're, I think they are putting in some turn lanes. So, the turn lanes would be off of Quinn, onto Hawthorne, onto Quinn, and vice versa, just like you would see at a normal intersection with probably a through lane and so forth. But there's no improvements that are proposed beyond that. So from Quinn to Alameda, it's just at that intersection with the traffic signal.
And how far south on Hawthorne would that road widen to three lanes?
It's, it's just at the intersection.
So, it's going to have to be widened a little bit though, I think, because there's only--
There may be at the intersection, but nothing, and I haven't, I haven't seen like--
They won't go back 1,000 feet though, will they? So there's no, and when you talked about a deceleration lane, I don't see any opportunity on Hawthorne Road to get anything like that.
It's possible because you still have, because of the width of the right-of-way, the road, the road itself is only 23 to 25 feet. That doesn't mean that there's not additional right-of-way there. The right-of-way itself is about 50 feet. So there is, there is a right-of-way there, but it is kind of along that corridor of Hawthorne, it's kind of hodgepodge. There are some properties that if and when Hawthorne is wide and you put in curb, gutter, and sidewalk, that we'll probably have to do some acquisition or work with the property owners and so forth for that, because some, some of the properties actually go to like the centerline property. So, there's, there's some issues there.
So, at this point though, there's been no research into this deceleration lane, whether it could be put in or--
No, they're going to have to provide additional, additional information at that end for engineering.
Any other questions for Matt?
At the beginning of your presentation just now, I think you said that with the current residential medium-density single-family as duplexes, there would only be 12 up there? Is that what you said?
Yeah. So, you could have 12, possibly 12 duplexes.
Okay.
So it'll be basically 24 units.
Any others? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I also failed to ask if anybody had questions for the applicant. We didn't necessarily ask the applicant any questions. Are there any questions prior to going into the public hearing for the applicant? Or are we good? Very good. Okay, we will now move into the public hearing. As explained before, we will have three different sections of the public hearing. And please keep your comments limited to three minutes. So with that, the public hearing is now open. If we could hear from any who are in favor of the application. Seeing none, any who are neutral to the application. Seeing none, those who are opposed. And if you'd please state your name and your address and--
Can you sign that point?
Yes.
Do I have to sign into this?
Yeah, if you'll just put your information there.
Just speak things up. Is it possible to pass that form around to anyone who came to speak?
Did my, I had some written correspondence for my objections for this. Did it make it into their packets? Okay, to clear up Jack's point, Mr. Brennan's point--
If you could give us your--
The road, the Hawthorne, proposed Hawthorne Road is going to be probably 300 feet short.
Sir, could you give us your name and address, please? Just verbally?
Pardon?
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Butch McDougall, 3991 Hawthorne.
Thank you.
So the road is only going to be extended about 150 feet from Quinn Road. And this was 530 feet south. Is that correct?
Something like that.
It's a long ways away. So I stated my objections. The only thing I would add is, I would like to think that the zoning, there's a lot of thought that goes into it. So you buy property and live somewhere depending on that zoning, and the next thing you know, we're changing it again. It makes it kind of tough to where you might want to live when we're always changing it. Down on South First, where I have a couple of properties, we're on about the third chain right now. But I think I put everything in my objections. It's going to change the neighborhood dramatically, plus this traffic coming out on the Hawthorne Road is going to be just worse than it is now.
Thank you. All right, feel free to come forward. Any who would like to speak, sign in and then give us your name and address, please.
Do you want me to pass that around?
Sure, that's, yeah. Or the person speaking to you, you may want to sit in that second row, in that first chair. That's going to be, then we know who's on deck.
Thank you.
My name's Tiffany Bailey, and I live at 3960 Hawthorne Road, which would be right in front of the horse pasture where they're going to build. The only entryway, you know, that was on the proposal would have been basically between my property and my neighbors. Right now, as it stands, it takes me anywhere from five minutes or more to get out onto Hawthorne, especially going southbound. I just don't think, you know, that it can support that many people with just one entryway. I don't see it, you know, room for sidewalks. And I believe where they are going to start widening up for the light, it's about halfway in the front of my property is where it starts to slightly, you know, widen. With the two duplexes, they're literally, what, 10 and a half feet from my backyard, my shop. And the, what would it be, 40, 40 units? I mean, you times two with the cars, that's 80 to 100 cars coming in and out on Hawthorne. And I just think there should be a single-family area. So, thank you.
Jim Sterner, I'm right across street, 3953 Hawthorne. I have to compliment the gentleman, the professional, for the town to deny it. And I've been really proud of how Pocatello, they're building really nice places. They're a place on Hawthorne, they're building a really nice house there, and one on Kinghorn. Really, really tastefully done. And that's been the history of Pocatello. But, and as a, our professional that's in the city said, this is not a good fit. I kind of worry about the safety, the folks coming out of this because Hawthorne does back up. I'm in the house across the street where the lane will come out. And I have to make a right-hand turn. You can't make a left. They're not going to be able to get out of there. And maybe the light will change that, but that's to be seen. Yeah, I hate to see us become like Chubbick. They just, they throw a house up, a business, a house, business, and this is, I really would like to see Pocatello stay appropriate with the zoning. I have selfish reasons. This little narrow road, there isn't no sidewalks there. So if you get two cars going side by side, someone's in that long lane, it might be a little dangerous for them. Plus, if Hawthorne is backed up and they have an emergency, they're not going to get out of there. And then, 80 cars is a lot to be coming in and out of there. And we've addressed the congestion. For Hawthorne, there's only four roads that cross the, go across the freeway. And Hawthorne is one of them, and so it can get quite busy. So I'm, I'm just excited that the professionals from the city said no, or it's what I thought he said. But thank you.
Thank you.
Marvin Blanchard, I live at 1159 West Quinn. This development would be right behind my property line. And if they did this one, the road would go right along the side of my house, along the property line, which I'm not in favor of, but I'm wondering if there's any stipulation in for a six-foot, whatever, privacy fence to mitigate the noise? Because right now, I can sit in my backyard and not hear really any of the traffic, even though Hawthorne and Quinn are pretty loud. I can sit in my backyard and not really hear anything, and I can see the mountains, and it looks like the country back there. With this back there, it will pretty much ruin the atmosphere of my yard and house. And that's, that's my biggest concern, is it would really ruin the atmosphere that we've tried to create in our, our backyard, especially if this road goes up the side of us and then it's also behind us, so we're bordered on two sides. So that's, that's my big concern.
Very good, thank you.
Dave Hendricks, 3931 Hawthorne. I'm against this completely because of the amount of traffic as well, which has been addressed, but there's also the, with kids walking back and forth to school. You have no curb and gutter whatsoever. I know my daughter's been tagged by a mirror on the car walking home on Hawthorne, so it does get busy. I know their study says it's at certain times of the day, and that's great that you study it, but if you live there, you know, it's, seems like it's constant, because you get all the traffic that's going to and from Chubbick. They don't use Poli, they use Hawthorne. Some will use Philbin, but mostly Hawthorne. 80 more cars. I know you say it's two trips. That must be two and front work, but I'm guessing it'd be a few more trips and a few more cars. I would like to know, is there going to be a property manager to take care of the property that's there, or is it going to be left to the people that are renting the units? As far as that goes, I am aware of a couple of properties that Mr. Packer has. One's a rail yard, I believe, and the other one's on McKinley. The one on, at the rail yard, I'm not saying it's run down, but it doesn't look like it has a property manager. Not that it's dilapidated by any means, but that's one of the concerns I have, is how's it's going to be kept up as far as entrance on Quinn goes. I think it has just as many problems as Hawthorne does. So until this, well, this intersection, somebody believes that this is going to fix the traffic. I believe it's going to cause more of an issue because of the way the turn lanes are. Because once the straight lane fills up, you have the people that want to turn. Once it fills up, you still have the same problem with the people that want to go to the east, to the west, and straight. I believe there's going to be more bottleneck there with the intersection. They did look in a roundabout, that wasn't an option. I just think that until that whole road is completely taken care of and widened, there shouldn't be any entrances in or out of there for any developments. Because you also have Robin, which is an issue in the morning with school, in the afternoon with school. Buses backing up on Robin as well on Hawthorne. It's just a road that needs to be completely rebuilt somehow, something. The city needs to take a serious look at that, and not just bits and pieces all the way to Garrett Way. Even that intersection there at Alameda and Hawthorne is a bit of a problem. So those are my issues, and those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dana Hendricks, and I lived at 3931 Hawthorne Road. I've lived on that property for almost 20 years, and we see the traffic every day. So, you know, like my husband says, it's, it's constant. We, both of us work up until 3:30 PM, so when we get home, from constantly, from 3:30 when we pull into the driveway until 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock at night, it is constant through there. Sometimes it's like around 5 o'clock, sometimes it's not. But it is a real big issue to sit there at our place and watch the traffic, you know? I mean, there's, there's kids walking home from school, like he said. It is a real big issue. And so with this particular project that's going on, I mean, what, what is going to happen with us since we are taxpayers? Is that going to help our property value go up? Or is it just going to, you know, just cause bigger issues with, you know, between the property owners? Because some of us, like Jim, he's been there for, you know, ever since we moved in. So, it's, it's just a constant thing. We see kids walking up and down the street, and it's dark. They're really super dark. There's only traffic, you know, the lights and stuff on certain corners. And so, like my husband said, our daughter had been tagged by a mirror driving up, and it is a concern. And so, I mean, what other issues are there going to be because of the extra added traffic? And just looking at this, this wasn't exactly the proposal that was given to us on the paperwork, so is it different? Is, you know, between the duplexes and the fourplexes, what?
They're proposing for the fourplex. They're saying that this is the option that they could do without coming to us and asking for any approvals.
I see. Okay. So, I mean, either way, you know, Quinn is fairly, I mean, when we go to the grocery store, we have a choice, is either go to Smith's, go all the way down Hawthorne, or go to Walmart, or even going into Walgreens through the mall. I mean, it's, it's a consistent fight. And I work for Allstate, so from the insurance point of view, it's, it's pretty crazy. Are they going to change the, because of the zoning change and whatnot? Is our insurance going to go up as well? It's something that many people don't think about. So, thank you.
My name's Gerald Aldis, and I live at 3925 Sandpiper Drive. Now, Sandpiper is in the Northgate subdivision, and my home is approximately about two houses behind this proposed plan on Sandpiper. And it's not right behind me, but it's about two houses north of me. Now, I've lived in this subdivision, ever since the subdivision went in. That's over 40 years ago. I moved in my home when it was brand new. So, I like living there, or I wouldn't be there today. But my, I got a couple of concerns. One of my concerns is property value. Now, I don't believe my property value will drop any if this goes in, but I do believe it'll make it a little tougher for me to sell my home and property if that goes in. Another concern I've got is like everybody else has mentioned, the, the traffic. If you're familiar with Hawthorne Road, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon to 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, it's horrible. Horrible. I see cars arriving, I can see cars every evening in my backyard. I look through the pasture, and they're lined up, cleared, cleared out of the Robin. Every night is terrible. And there's a light that needs to be put in there on Quinn and Hawthorne. A light has to be put there. It has to be put there now. And if you put-- And if you put this housing area in there, it's a no-brainer. It has to go in there. Now, I understand everybody I talk to, the city does not want to put a light there. I don't know if it's an expense for the city, or if they have conflict with Chubbick because of, that's the boundary, Quinn Road. I don't know what it is, but everybody says, well, it's a city that doesn't want to put a light in there. Well, if you put that, if that housing area goes in there, you have to put a light in there. It, that's a no-brainer. That has to be done. It should be done right now. But with this going in there, it's got to be in there. Now, they're talking about the road coming out of that housing area onto Hawthorne. Now, you can have that road come out of there on the Hawthorne, or you can change the plan and have it go out on Quinn. It, it doesn't make any difference on the traffic. It'll be the same no matter how you do it. Now, the other concern I have is one way into this housing area and one way out, one road. I'm concerned with the fire. If there's a fire in there, in that complex, and the traffic the way it is, it's going to be tough to get fire trucks and emergency personnel or anybody else in there. Hopefully, if that happens, it happens at midnight someday, and not three, three in the afternoon. As far as the, the light goes there, because, you know, I'm concerned with the school kids too. You know, like they said, uh, there's no sidewalks, and your kids after school from Wilcox and from Hawthorne walk down Hawthorne to go home. And you're walking down the road because there's no sidewalks. You walk down the side of the road. And with the extra traffic going back and forth and, you know, I mean, I cringe every time I go down there, you know, when school gets out in the morning, or at the evening, and or in the morning when they're going to school. I see them kids, and I just kind of cringe. I say, you know, they're going to get hit, somebody's going to get hit. And it's happened, you know, in the past.
Your three minutes are, are expired at this point.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you.
Okay, with no further testimony then, we will close the public hearing and rebuttal by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I apologize for the confusion. I should have left, this is the actual proposal. So, uh, again, I'm going to go through some of these issues, and we'll just talk about them from our perspective. But again, you guys might feel like it's a victory, or the residents might feel a victory if you guys deny this. But really what you're denying, again, is eight units. And Matt has, has calculated it in some way. I can show you that I have calculated it, and we can get the units that I, that I said. And let me, let me go back to that real fast. I was going to put that back, just so, just so that we're clear. I don't want anybody to feel like we can't get them. Um, now it's not getting one of those, and it's crashed, but, super. Oh, here it comes. Um, ooh, that's, that's, that's how many we could fit. In a normal, uh, in a normal scenario, that would be something that we could, uh, fit within the project. If, if Pocatello would allow, say, a more maximum density, that's the number of twin homes that we could fit in there. This is the project that we're proposing. This is the one that we were just discussing. So we could, we could maintain the access off of Quinn and still maintain the same density. But the way that we're doing it is Mr. Packer owns this house, so we could reduce the size of that lot by the additional units, and we can still get that sixteen number in there. And we would leave, you know, this part vacant. So it makes sense for us, from a development perspective, to take the traffic out on Quinn Road. But, um, again, that's not what our proposal is. So if we just jump back to this proposal. The lot sizes in this area, how did they happen? It wasn't because we had organized development, that we had planned development, we did any of that. What happened is the city grew out there in an unorganized fashion, and that's why we don't have sidewalks, and we don't have curb and gutter, and we don't have what's called a principal arterial in our community wide enough to handle the traffic. Because we didn't plan. We didn't do what was right. These, these houses, these lots, aren't what we do when we plan within a community. I'm sure you guys have had lots of, uh, education on this. Uh, that is a prime example of sprawl. It's in the heart of our city. They're large lots. Um, they're great. I'd love to have one of those lots, I, I agree. But they're, um, they're not the way we develop as a city. They're the way, maybe it happens in the county, and then the city comes in and takes over, but it's not what you see typically from a city development. So is this area, is this more intense? It's certainly more intense than these houses that it's around. But look at what's happening in the area. You heard, you heard the, uh, you heard the, um, testimony from the residents. This is a fairly intense use. Yeah, it's a, it's a medical clinic, um, it's a, it's a long-term care facility, there's a, a large parking lot associated with it. It impacts all these residents, you know, that are within the, within the project. The only difference is our proposal accesses Hawthorne Road, and their proposal accesses Quinn Road. You say, you know, these aren't similar, but this is a fairly intense use. There's a lot of parking associated with this. This is a fourplex development. Uh, there's, uh, six fourplexes, twenty-four units. It's on a fairly small, uh, piece of property. We've got the church. Further to the north, uh, you guys just approved a zone change in, in this vicinity. Uh, we've got Hawthorne Garden Apartments that just went in. I think if I update the, the map there, you, you see, this is, this is a very nice addition to our community. There's thirty apartment units per, per acre on that, on that particular, uh, parcel. Twenty-five, I guess. So it is intense, but it's not hugely out of character with what's happening in that area. This area is changing. Why is it changing? Because the traffic changes it. Pretty soon, these people that have their half-acre lot, they're going to go to sell, and their buyer isn't going to be somebody that wants to live in that house. It's going to be somebody that wants to turn it into something that Mr. Packer wants to do. They want to redevelop it. They don't want to live on those busy streets anymore. That's just the way it is. That's the way the city evolves. That's the way things change. The traffic is driving the change. Is Hawthorne Road a busy road? It is. It's busy without our project. But one thing that I think is important to notice, or to note, is Hawthorne Road maybe has around ten thousand vehicles per day. Our tra, our, our project's going to generate two hundred trips per day, two hundred and fifty trips per day, something like that. It's a couple percent of what's on Hawthorne Road now. Two percent increase in the traffic. Is it significant? Is it going to significantly impact the traffic? I don't know. But if we do the other project and leave a vacant area and do what's allowed, it's still going to basically increase the traffic by two percent. Okay? Um, sidewalk, uh, sidewalks out there, I agree, there should be sidewalks on Hawthorne Road. But our project isn't the one that didn't put sidewalks on Hawthorne Road. That happened long before, uh, we proposed that. The city probably should be looking at that. Uh, it certainly is a big concern, especially when we have a school on, off of Hawthorne Road. Uh, a lot of talk about the traffic light. So let me just talk briefly about the traffic light. So the traffic light is going to improve the traffic around the light. Okay? As you get further away from the light, it's not going to help that much. But what it will do is it will create gaps in the traffic that people maybe don't see out there now. So you stop one lane of the traffic, and most of the traffic is in a predominant direct direction, it clears out, and then there's a, there's a lack before the traffic picks up again as the, as the phasing changes in the light. And so there's, there's time when there may not be vehicles, or there's very few vehicles as that light circulates through. And that allows people along Hawthorne Road to be able to make their maneuvers and things. So as you get further away from the light, the gaps tend to fill in, and they decrease, and then it becomes more like it is now. But this project is going to have very, very little impact on the traffic of what Hawthorne Road is today. Maybe we're being a little short-sighted as a community to just look at the intersection. Maybe we should be looking at all of Hawthorne Road. It is very difficult for my client to improve Hawthorne Road, because you can see, it was mentioned earlier, if you look at some of these orange lines in there, this is where the property hasn't been dedicated to the city. It's actually owned, um, by the, uh, by the, by the residents along Hawthorne Road. There's the potential that, you know, there is a prescriptive right-of-way there, and we certainly could do some development along there, but it's not, it's not owned in, in title by the city. It's, it's owned by the residents along that road. The, uh, the, the, the project will have a, a manager, you know, Mr. Packer manages the projects. We certainly recognize that it is going to change the neighborhood. There's no doubt about it. It's a different use. It's different than what is in the neighborhood. But we're allowed to change the neighborhood under the current zoning. It's, it's allowed. We had some discussion about fire and emergency access. You know, we have worked with the fire department, they're on board with the access. We have an emergency turnaround at the end. We have, uh, what we're proposing with the forty units is, is, uh, acceptable to them uh, with a single access. The, uh, we were intending to do sidewalk on one side of that access road so that we would have sidewalk. Again, that's going to dump out onto Hawthorne Road that doesn't have sidewalk. So, uh, again, I think I've pretty well addressed, um, most of the issues that people brought up. Um, let me just make sure that there's not, one of the, one of the comments was, we're always requesting zoning changes, and it's hard to, uh, it's hard to kind of plan where you live if you, because people are always asking for zoning changes. Where that happens is where there's the potential for development. Okay? Um, if you live in the middle of, of the university area, where it's fully developed and the land's kind of reached its potential, there's very few of those zoning requests. But when you live in an area that is underutilized, by underutilized, I say that in a, in a, in a term by, which it hasn't been developed to its full potential, then people look for the potential in that property and want to develop. And it's in the city's best interest, and I'm sure you've, um, heard that, to infill. It's much, it's much more economical and better for the city to infill into some of these areas, um, with projects that, that take advantage of some of these areas that have growth, that the growth has occurred past them. They're very difficult to make successful. These infill developments are very difficult to make successful. And that's why in the comprehensive plan, a lot of comprehensive plans, uh, have advantages given, or want to have advantages given to projects that try to do infill. So again, I want to stress that we're talking about eight units. That's our difference. Is it a victory to deny those eight units? Is that really going to make a difference to these residents, those eight units? I, I agree with their concerns. A lot of them are related to traffic, and that's, that's an issue with or without our project. The kids walking to school, that's an issue with or without our project. But are those eight units, eight units, going to make that much difference in what the residents see? Or I can guarantee it makes a big difference to the success of the project for our developer. So I ask that you consider that, and I hope, I wanted to address one more thing on the traffic study, sorry. I get, um, it's hard for me to, um, look at the codes, so we, we look at the codes and what's, what's required. Bannock Transportation did a major evaluation of when a traffic study is required and when one isn't, and when you're having a major impact on the traffic and when you're not. And they set forth criteria in that study, and then the city of Pocatello adopted that. Okay? So they adopted that criteria. You guys have probably seen that. But when they adopted that criteria, they set the threshold for a study. And if this, this project does not meet a threshold for a study in, in the guidance, in the guidelines that the city has adopted, in the guidelines that Bannock Transportation, uh, planning hired a consultant to come in and study where, where should we be doing these studies? At what threshold should we be doing them? And this project does not meet that threshold. So I want to make that clear. And again, back to the eight units. It doesn't make that big of a difference to the residents, but it makes a lot of difference to our client, to my client, and I just ask that you approve it.
Mitch, can I, I have a question?
Yes, please.
Before you sit down, you keep talking about eight units.
Mm-hmm.
And the difference between twelve that's been talked about and sixteen is those four units. And you show those going up to Quinn. Would that require approval from the city for those to go out?
It's zoned, it's zoned, uh, same zoning.
The same zoning on his property as it is on this?
Yeah.
Property, they wouldn't need to be joined or anything else?
We might have to do a short plat to split off the back or do something, but not necessarily because he's not selling any of the parcels. We're just developing on those parcels, and, and he can, he's going to keep that house as a rental, and it's going to be a rental home, and that whole thing can be just a, a rental project. So I, I don't believe we would have to do anything.
But that is where the difference lies, isn't it?
Some of it, yes. I think, you know, maybe we have a, a little variance, but yes, it, it lies in, in what we can get in that area. Because, uh, if, if we're just going to do twin homes, right? We're going to take advantage of the whole property. We're not going to, we're not going to cut off that piece along Quinn Road and, and do, you can see here, we've just kind of left the, we've left this, uh, untouched. We've pretty much left it the same size as, as what that parcel is.
Even with your fourplexes, then, you're telling us that you could go in and start building the fourplexes up on that property as well?
We didn't request a zone change on that piece, so that's a no. We would have to come back and, and request that. But that wasn't part of our application. But if we did twin homes, we don't have to ask you for anything. We can come and put a twin home on that property, and we're good to go, as long as we meet the size requirements and things like that, we're, we're there. His, his property that he owns is, is all of this. And it's not all, you know, the whole difference is not what we're, between, uh, with that area, but that is some of the difference that we're seeing.
Any other questions for Mitch? Okay, thank you, Mitch. Very good. Commission, is there a discussion that we would like to have?
Well, how about me?
Very good, Chad. Let's hear it.
Um, these kind of projects are always difficult for me personally. I want to see Pocatello grow and expand and prosper. And that's part of why I like to see these infill projects, and partly why we now have planning and zoning commissions, so hopefully in the future we can avoid these infill projects like that. Now, to think that things are going to remain the same, like Mr. McDougal was saying, they're not. not. The town is going to grow. It's going to change. Traffic is going to get worse in some areas and less in other areas. Now, I live out in the Johnny Creek area and when I moved there, I never thought we would have a South Galat connector, which has increased the traffic on Bannock Highway dramatically and we have no sidewalks. And we have a school out there. So, a lot of the problems that you folks are expressing are experienced elsewhere in town. However, that being said, I think the proposed contract rezone is putting 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. I think it's just a little much. I drove around the neighborhood for about a half an hour this afternoon looking at things. I'm very familiar with the traffic on Hawthorne Road, but I think the proposed contract rezone is a little too much personally.
Thank you, Chad. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I look at this thing and I see our role on this commission as being the human side to the rules and the laws, like seeing beyond that and seeing what's best for the community. And this development would change the entire character of this community. These people have... This is a very... This neighborhood has long-term homeowners. They've been there, in some cases, decades. It's not a new subdivision. And it's, as somebody who lives in the university neighborhood and sees long-term homeowners die or leave and houses become rentals and how it completely changes the character, I really can't help but side with these people. And I do agree with jackets, too much in that area. And yes, you can go in with duplexes. As I always say though, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. And I really feel for what they're going through and I don't think it's a good idea.
So, I did my site visit this past Saturday, approximately 18:37, and I sat in front of the Hawthorne exit there for 10 minutes and watched 67 cars go past me in a 10-minute period on a Saturday. So, I can only imagine what it would be during peak times. It's, I guess, discomforting to imagine myself as a student walking along those dark roads, you know, especially in winter time maybe where the conditions of the road might be worse. I agree with Sarah.
Any comments?
Well, I guess I'll comment because there's been pointed out by Mr. Greer, other areas and certainly the apartment complex up by them all and others reflect that it's been changing, but one of the things I think we've tried to be consistent on and it cuts both ways sometimes is trying that transition between those types of areas that have high-density, medium-density, low-density and just trying to keep the comprehensive view of that now where it was once, you know, just sprawl and none of those considerations. And I think my concern personally about it, I understand that they can do this, but at least that's more consistent with the type of transition that has been talked about in the past. And that's why that's a medium-density as opposed to a high-density area because it's going... It's just dropping off the cliff without the natural transition that we've talked about in other areas along Hawthorne Road with similar concerns. And so, I, you know, I understand that they can do that, but at least that's more consistent with the type of transitions that we've talked about in the past with similar lots, including the one that Mr. Greer talked about up the road there. But that still allowed the transition from the commercial across the street and I believe that that was a commercial zone anyway that was changed to a residential medium, which was more consistent with the transition and what was trying to be accomplished out there. So, I don't think it's comparing apples to apples to point to that because that was trying to change it from the prior thought of commercial and starting that transition to those residential neighborhoods that were single-family homes.
Thank you. And I guess my thoughts are, is, you know, we kind of look at these zoning maps and stuff and seeing a spot... I will agree with what Mitch said in that there is a lot of spread-out space in this area and that is going to be attractive to people that are coming in trying to make perhaps a different use of the ground than what the current residents are. I do believe that it's something that the residents in the neighborhood are going to face, whether this project goes or not, throughout the future, that things like this will be occurring, especially along Quinn and Hawthorne. Personally, I would rather see a project like this closer to Quinn and Hawthorne rather than, you know, tucked back inside, but understanding that's where the ground is and so that's where the applicant is trying to make use of it. It is somewhat unfortunate, but it is the truth that we're dealing with this because of a lack of planning originally. And trying to maintain some type of consistency is certainly a challenge that we face and we will continue to face. If there aren't any other comments or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we disapprove the contract rezone and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact and recommendation.
It's been moved?
Nên seconded.
Nên seconded. Eastland, would you... And prior to calling the vote, I will also say that this is simply a recommendation to the city council and so that will go before that body and they do have the final say on what the actual... What will actually take place. Eastland, will you call the votes?
Brian?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Hancock?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Saramou?
All right, motion passes. With that, that concludes all of our items on the agenda and so we will adjourn. Thank you for coming.